Okay. Let's move on to Special N as in Nancy. Mr. Lee, you called that special as well as Mr. Blumenfield. Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
We're on N as in Nancy? Okay.
N as in Nancy, yes.
So, in the first I further move, while I think it's important that we are suspending the evictions due to the hardships of COVID-19, this paragraph talks about 24 months to fulfill the payment obligations back. I think we all have to remember that these, some of these are mom and pop businesses that have business, you know, have bills to pay, have mortgages to do. I don't even know if it's legal for us to interfere with a contract that they have with their tenant, but two years seems awfully long. I propose that we just bring that back to a more reasonable amount of six months to fulfill the payment obligations.
Is that your motion, sir? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kukorian is going to go ahead and second that. Okay, that's one. Mr. Blumenfield, did you have anything to add to it? Another amendment to this motion?
That was the same. I'm just looking at that number, trying to figure out what's best, and it's hard to know without expert advice. So, I think we could, you know, set a time limit, like you've said, with the option to renew after we get more information and figure it out. I mean, I think we need to do this, but we need to, as we learn how bad the pandemic is down the road, make that number appropriate with appropriate expertise. I'm just not prepared to throw a number out of months. It's completely arbitrary. We've got to pick something in the short term and then give ourselves the option to reevaluate it. We may be, maybe 24 months may be just fine, but let's get information. Let's not be arbitrary.
Anyone else wants to speak on this item? Mr. Bonin?
Yeah, I would actually like to suggest, Mr. Sadio's suggestion is we do 12 months then instead of 24. We're in a situation now, colleagues, where, I hate to sound like Chicken Little, but, and I hope I do sound, I hope I do turn out to be Chicken Little, but I think we're on the verge of a global economic catastrophe and that we are going to see people thrown out onto the streets. And we absolutely need to find a way to help mom and pop landlords, and I'm hoping the state will come through on us. But when we are talking, in many cases here, about families who are already paying 90% of their income, 90% of their income, hundreds of thousands of people in Los Angeles in that predicament, they are not going to be able to pay this back quickly. And if 24 months is a bridge too far for all those who are sort of hanging on by their fingernails, trying not to allow this to throw them and their families out on the street, I would implore us to at least go for the 12 months instead.
Mr. Sadio?
For the same reasons stated, and I would add that it also allows, it's definite, it's certain, it allows a timetable, it's reasonable, it's responsible, it's not too far, it doesn't permit that, you know, relax, I don't have to deal with it now, but it's actually something that I think is very measured and meets the challenges of the moment. And hopefully, we're overreaching, but I don't think that we are. And I trust that the renters also, no one wants to carry debt, and that if we're not met with these challenges, that this provides an opportunity. There's nothing that prevents us from paying in a shorter period, so I'd ask for an aye vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sadio. Is there a second to Mr. Bonin's amendment?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sadio, thank you. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President. So, we are in uncharted territory for sure in a major crisis situation, but just to think this through a little bit, this is not limited to RSO tenants. It applies to all tenants of rental property, no matter their income, no matter how wealthy they are, no matter whether they're renting a single-family home or a studio apartment. 24 months, or even 12 months, will extend their rental payment obligations, in most cases, beyond the term of their lease, and in many cases, beyond the term of their tenancy, which means that any remaining rental payments will be essentially uncollectible after that period of time. It'll be, you know, a debt, sure, but a debt that a landlord will never be able to collect. So, I think we have to be a little realistic about what it is that we, what we're doing here, and we are basically shifting loss. We're not doing anything other than shifting this loss. And if we don't do that in a way that, as Mr. Blumenfield says, is not entirely arbitrary, you know, physicians say first do no harm, we have, we run the risk of actually accelerating, you know, a lot of adverse economic consequences that could be much longer lasting than the coronavirus. So, I get that Chicken Little is important at this point, Mr. Bonin, but so is not messing up an already fragile housing market that we have with the least affordable housing anywhere in America. And so, I hope that as we do this, we do it carefully, we do it with some data to support our conclusions, that when this comes back for final, you know, approval, that we actually have an opportunity to consider all of these options and others. For example, I would throw out another suggestion, maybe, and I don't know if we can even do this consistent with state law, but maybe landlords who are in the position of, that we're talking about here, should be allowed to apply the security deposit as current rent, and then the continuing obligation, the renter would refill the security deposit essentially, so that at least they're not taking that sudden hit and having to pay their mortgage while the security deposit is sitting in a bank and they can't touch it. So, those might be, you know, the sorts of approaches we might want to take. I would also note that in the second moving clause, we impose upon the landlords penalties if they don't inform tenants, but the language also indicates the right to forgiveness of rent, and I want to make sure that we're clear, that I don't think I've heard anybody around this horseshoe yet recommend forgiveness of rent. We're talking about a moratorium on evictions for the non-payment of rent and a repayment obligation that continues rather than forgiveness. So, those are my only points on that. But, you know, whatever number we pick, whether it's three months, or six months, or 12 months, or 24 months, some people are not going to be able to make that, and I think we know that as we're going in. We also know that some landlords will be able to absorb those, some landlords won't, and some landlords will lose their buildings, either to banks, where they'll be probably sold off to some, one of these consolidators, or, you know, funds, national funds that buy up distressed properties. These are actual consequences that will occur if we don't get this right, and when they do occur, housing is not going to be more affordable in this city. Housing is not going to be made more accessible to more people in this city. It's going to be less so.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Wesson?
You know, I agree with you, Paul, that these are actual coincidence, I mean, this will actually occur, just like individuals will actually lose their apartments and be forced to live on the streets. I think it is appropriate that we take a deep breath and a timeout. I referenced earlier, we are all in this together, from the renter all the way up to the bank. So, I could live with the 12 months, but that's why I said earlier, it is so important that we engage in a conversation with all of the principals, so that we can listen to tenants' rights organizations, and we can listen to the mom and pops. I think that they have the opportunity to give us suggestions and recommendations, how we move forward that we can't even think of. So, basically, what we're asking for at this point is a timeout, chat with them, and see if we can come up with something that works the best. So, I don't know, you know, what the count is, who's going to go where, but we have to act, we have to act quickly, because individuals will be placed on the street, which exacerbates a problem that we're already dealing with. And then, another thing that concerns me, too, is that you have so many people that have spent their lives investing in an eight-unit or 12-unit apartment, and that is their retirement. They need to sit at the table and tell us things that they're comfortable with doing, and how long that they can do them. I think that the lenders and the banks can give us accounting maneuvers and other ideas that we haven't thought about yet, but we do need to act, we do need to act quickly, and I think we need to give ourselves realistically enough time to bring people in and discuss this, because the things that we're acting on now are things that we have to act on and act on quickly, but we will be making a big mistake if we do not bring everybody in. In order for us to survive as a country, we're going to have to come together. We're going to have, in order for this country to stay afloat, we're all going to have to work together. So, I think that, I get calls from my small businesses and landlords concerned, just like everybody else, and I tell them, we're in the business of trying to help everyone, but let's help the ones that are most vulnerable, let's help the ones that we know that are weeks away from being placed on the street, bring in our other stakeholders, and try to come up with something common sense that we can form a consensus on. So, I do support 12 months, I could support less, but the key is, we got to act, we got to act quickly, and we need to take advantage of their expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Blumenfield?
Just adding on, because I...
I'm so sorry. The reason why I wanted to speak on this in the first place until you guys got into it, on the last moving clause, I'd like to amend it where it says rental assistance for tenants, and I'd like to add, and students.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by who, Mr. Buzkaino? Okay. Mr. Blumenfield?
No, just adding on to what Mr. Wesson said, I don't think that the answer is ultimately going to be a negotiation about the number of months. It's going to be much more complicated, it's going to be a formula, it's going to involve other give and takes besides just months, rent, and other things that can be negotiated. So, I just think we ought to act on a short period of time and give ourselves the space to bring in the folks. We all want to give as much as we can to both the renters and the landlords, especially the mom and pop ones.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to add one other consideration. We may want to have some sort of an income cap, at least look at that, because renters like myself don't necessarily need to avail themselves of this, but some people may just because the opportunity is there, so we should consider that as well.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez, follow Mr. O'Farrell, and then Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank Mr. Kukorian for those very insightful and thoughtful comments. Having lived through the last housing bubble in the housing arena, working for the Realtors' Association, I will tell you that it was only through the intervention of the federal government that we were able to actually reconstruct the lending for families to avoid foreclosure. And in the same circumstance, we're going to need the federal government to intervene with lending the teeth of the Department of Treasury and HUD to help create an environment where many of these landlords who have these mortgages are going to put lenders in a position to actually force them to cooperate. We saw record numbers of foreclosures that were occurring at a time when, during, when folks who were overextended, when the housing prices were falling, falling faster and faster into foreclosure. But if not for having worked with then the Obama administration to help create new regulatory methods to forcing the lenders to creating things like the Hafa program, so that they could actually, or even do short sales, because none of the lenders were actually cooperating in creating a standardized method of even conducting short sales. So, the reality is, is that as much as I know we are eager to create an environment here that protects renters, and trust me, I, you know, I remember slowing down, we were slowing down as much as we could, foreclosures, because we wanted to keep families in homes that didn't help anybody. And I think it's still true today, we need to do everything possible to stem the tide of seeing more families pushed into homelessness because they're not able to make ends meet right now, given the circumstances of COVID-19. So, but I think it would be irresponsible for us to create such an environment where we extend such a period that until the federal government comes in, we're going to force these landlords into this situation. So, it's because of that experience and having lived through it once before on the outside that I actually am comfortable with a six-month, because I think the reality is, is that we do need the federal government's assistance to force lenders to be at this table, because I will tell you, they will not come here willingly. They haven't before, they were forced into that situation before, and I think it's going to be required of the federal government to help assure that we are forcing them to this table again, because I know that a lot of these property owners are going to also be struggling with making those payments, given that we are going to be adopting these measures. And I think they're important measures, I think it's responsible to make sure that we're keeping families in homes, in their, keeping shelter over their heads. That's why we're also providing a series of relief efforts from the state and federal government, and even here locally, where many of us are trying to provide resources that will help float them during this critical time as well. So, I'm comfortable with six months. I think these are important measures that we need to take, but I also recognize that the truth of the matter is, and to Mr. Wesson's point, we need everybody at the table, but we certainly need the federal government's teeth to help us assure that we get those lenders to cooperate as well. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Whatever decisions we make today, we can always modify one week from today and the week after that, depending on this very fast-moving, very quickly-changing pandemic, and we absolutely do need to build guardrails around this. You know, I always talk about the unintended consequences of something, and perhaps we could have Rushmore Cervantes and Dave Michelson to answer a few questions about what their impressions are of the language as it is currently written, and the types of language we're discussing now in terms of possibly modifying this, because what we seek to do is provide immediate relief to the thousands of renters who are going to be impacted by the coronavirus, you know, pandemic. And that means many, if not most, of our service employees, our workers in the service industry, and that is not necessarily specified in terms of the moratorium on evictions either. It's pretty general, and I think it includes all moratoriums on all evictions, even if it's a pre-existing violation of a lease agreement. So, I don't want to start throwing my read on this.
Hold on for just a second. Mr. O'Farrell, I haven't called either one of these gentlemen to the table, so can you just give me just a second?
Yeah.
So, anyone else have any questions of both H-Sid and the City Attorney's Office, so we can go ahead and...
Thank you, thank you. So, in terms of your read on this, and what we, I think collectively strive to accomplish with an eviction moratorium, what are some of your thoughts?
Rushmore Cervantes with H-Sid, thank you very much for the question, Councilman. In reading the motion, obviously, the council, everyone is trying to respond as quickly as possible to address this crisis. The first matter of I move, therefore move, is where it says draft an emergency ordinance implementing a temporary moratorium on evictions and late fees until the emergency declaration is lifted. Now, the governor's executive order is more broadly defining, or actually, I should say more specifically defining, as it relates to COVID-19-related non-payment. The language within this executive order by the governor is very explicit, and I've had Dave Michelson for the City Attorney's Office look at this as well. It appears that the way this order is written, it precludes the city from being so broad in nature relative to the blanket moratorium on evictions, because it's not tying specifically to COVID-19-related deficiencies in income that does not enable them to pay their rents. So, in discussing this, I mean, this is really something we need to discuss relative to, do we want, I understand the need, that the desire of some council members to not necessarily require verification. It would certainly be easier for the city and the department to implement if it was just a broad stroke across the board, but in looking specifically at the governor's order, it appears like there are some limitations that relates to that, and certainly could have further implications even if we were to proceed, notwithstanding that deviation from the governor's order. Mr. Michelson, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure. Good afternoon, David Michelson, Office of City Attorney. I think Rushmore summed it up quite well. You know, in looking at, you know, state law, some constitutional legal principles, and very importantly, the governor's order that came out last night, local governments such as yourself clearly have leeway in this incredible, difficult time with this pandemic to enact laws to protect tenants, both residential and commercial. The governor's order zeroes in on the coronavirus as the justification with respect to renters' protections from evictions, and if you had had a chance to look at the governor's order that came out last night, it's really focused on where tenants, residential or commercial, are unable to make rent payments during the emergency because of things related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And therefore, as Rushmore is pointing out in this first, I therefore move paragraph at the bottom of your first page, it would appear to sweep too broadly, and we would encourage you to stay focused on the concern around the COVID-19 pandemic, and using that as the rationale for when renters cannot make their rent payment to afford them that eviction protection, whether residential or commercial. And in speaking to the period of time by which renters can pay rent that is otherwise lawfully due, as you know, I'm sure that the mayor's order provided for a six-month window for rent to be paid to the landlords after the closure of the emergency. There, you know, we're in uncharted legal territories, unfortunately, so I cannot point to any particular case law or statutory law that speaks directly to what specific period of time will be lawful, but the longer the period of time, the more, the greater the likelihood that a law would be viewed as unconstitutional as to impairments of contracts. So, I appreciate what Councilmember Blumenfield said and others in terms of maybe incrementally having the opportunity to roll this out based on additional information that comes forward.
I appreciate that. I think you made an argument for a consistent approach, or something that is informed by what the state is doing, et cetera. Just the other, Madam President, just the other points I want to make in terms of, is there, is there a contingency on this, or might there be, this is just rhetorical, might there be a contingency in terms of the landlords that would be at risk with their mortgage payments, a contingency based on state and/or federal action in that regard? And that's rhetoric, because we don't have the answer yet, but that's something to consider. And is there a tie to the AMI in terms of the, those who might face evictions that can easily afford relocating somewhere else? That question would be more pertinent if it were broadly way beyond the coronavirus reason for the moratorium. And then, could there be in this, and this is something to think about, too, maybe for next week, a utility, a utility sort of delay in, sort of invoking some sort of utility delay for property owners where a moratorium on eviction has been invoked? That's something I heard from one property owner today on my way out that said, look, I'm already on the ropes, and something like that could really help us, because we certainly don't want to lose our tenants, and we certainly support the moratorium eviction, eviction on moratorium, but something as basic as delaying payment on our own utility bills, which most property owners are liable for, is certainly an important factor. So, I would argue that it absolutely should be tied to the coronavirus, and we should stick with exactly whom we're trying to assist right now, and have a real balanced approach in this.
Okay. One thing I would like to add to that, Councilman, just for a point of reference, when Council President Martinez introduced and championed the Emergency Rental Relief Fund, when we were getting ready for the implementation of AB 1482, we did design that program around constituents that were 80% area median income and below, for just a point of reference. So, the way it's currently worded, it would be with no income restrictions.
And lastly, thank you. Lastly, I think that we don't know yet, I know that Trump just proposed a $1 trillion bailout essentially today, we don't know what that is going to look like, but something that, everything we do at the local level should be tied in some way, should have a reference to state and federal action in terms of relief for all parties that are affected by the coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, thank you, Mr. Kukorian, Council, for your sage perspective on this, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I've been persuaded, very compelling, six months gives us enough to look forward, it helps us address concerns, legal questions in terms of length of contracts and impairment of contracts, makes us coherent as a city with the mayor's perspective on this, and so, speaking to Mr. Bonin, I'm prepared to withdraw my second. He's satisfied with that, and suggests that we move forward with the proposal for six months.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Bonin, did you have, want to find another second, or are you withdrawing your...
We'll withdraw it, with the proviso that I'll be trying to extend it later. I will be as determined as Mr. Corretts and keep on going. Did want to note on this issue, colleagues, that if for any reason somebody is evicted in the next couple of months, they will be on the streets. Even if they have enough money to find another place, they ain't finding another place, because nobody's having an open house. Nobody's bringing people into their homes for a while now. So, an eviction notice is move into an encampment, an encampment, unless you have a relative who's going to let you come on the couch. That's the reality we're in now. So, as to the scope of it and the questions that were raised, I think it's probably at this point, and it certainly will be by the time the ordinance comes back to us, it is going to be the effect that the economic circumstances of anybody facing eviction is going to have been touched in some way by the coronavirus. So, I would ask that we move forward with this language, and the city attorney come back with the responsible way of implementing that, understanding that everybody qualifies, everybody qualifies at this point. There is not a person in Los Angeles whose life and whose income is not going to be impacted by the coronavirus. What I want to avoid, at all costs, is having some administrative process by which an immigrant housekeeper who is at home right now with three kids who are out of LAUSD has to navigate some bureaucratic maze in order to get the relief that we are trying to impart. If we have a burden of proof on a tenant, if we have an administrative process that we are going to enforce, and let's be honest, we kind of suck at enforcing stuff, then this rule is going to be more gums than teeth. And so, that is the objective, is to avoid a hurdle or an administrative process for people.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Kukorian, and Mr. Blumenfield?
Well, I think after hearing Mr. Michelson, I hadn't even thought of the fact that our legal ability to do this is in some ways constrained by existing state law on evictions as modified by the governor's emergency order, right? Is that...
That's correct.
So, I would follow the city attorney's advice on how we limit the moratorium, but I was going to suggest that the existence of the moratorium and how rapidly the back rent gets paid are really two distinct issues, and the moratorium is the emergency. I think we all would probably, to a person would agree, that we need to enact the moratorium to the greatest extent we can.
to the greatest extent we legally can to protect people who are being economically impacted by this right now. And we can take the time to work out, how are we going to handle lenders, how are we going to handle repayment obligations, so on. That's not as urgent as protecting people from being evicted tomorrow. So I was going to suggest that maybe we can separate those two issues, and perhaps when it comes back, since we're going to have to vote on all of this separately, maybe those can be presented separately, we can even have an ICO if it's within our ability to do that on the moratorium. And then the other part, we can debate and discuss whether six months makes sense, or 12 months makes sense, or, you know, how we involve the lenders in this or not. I just think that those are two separate issues, so that was my first point. And then, oh gosh, I'm sorry, I've forgotten my other point. I'll come back to it, I guess, if I remember.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, did you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, just, it's building on what Mr. Bonin said about the connection, I understand legally it needs to be connected to COVID-19. We all know that everything economically is connected to that, and so just in the drafting of it, creating sort of the affirmative defense, or the affirmative argument that unless proven otherwise, you know, economic hardship during this, you know, during this time is related to COVID-19, and if we can make that finding, or create that affirmative defense, so to speak, we could stay legal with our COVID-19 requirement and be as broad as we all want to be.
Did you think about it, Mr. Kocorian?
I did, thank you. Thank you for that accommodation, Madam President, and I think somewhat related to Mr. Blumenfield's point just now. The language as it is now is a moratorium on all evictions for any circumstances whatsoever, including Mr. Rue's party houses in his district, and, you know, any number of other reasons that somebody might be evicted. I think what we're getting at is people who are being evicted for non-payment of rent. And so I think it should be so limited, otherwise we really are well beyond the range of issues that are related to the virus. So that, I would propose, that, what I think should be proposed as an amendment, that the first moving clause should be limited to implementing a temporary moratorium on evictions and late fees relating to non-payment of rent until the emergency declaration is lifted.
Is there a second? Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Bonin?
I want to be cautious about that. That makes sense on first blush, but there are going to be landlords who are going to try to use this as an opportunity to force people out, who may have made the last rent thing, but they're going to come up with some other excuse. And I think we want to be mindful of the fact that evicting somebody now means they're going to be homeless. And while that seems like, the non-payment of rent seems like it passes the reasonable virtue test of who we're trying to protect, I think the secondary goal of this body has got to be to prevent more people living on tents in our streets. And if we craft too narrowly, we're going to wind up with more people on the streets within a couple of weeks.
All right. Mr. Kocorian, did you want to speak on this again? You're back on the queue. Okay. All right, let's go ahead, we're going to be, there is three motions on the floor. So let's prepare to vote on the motion introduced by Mr. Wesson and seconded by Mr. Buscano.
I just introduced another one.
The one Kocorian just did. Oh, students.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, we're going to go back to Mr. Kocorian's motion, seconded by Mr. O'Farrell. Did you want to go ahead and repeat?
So on the first moving clause, to limit the moratorium to, and waiver of late fees, moratorium on evictions and late fees to non-payment of rent.
All right. Moved by Mr. Kocorian and seconded by Mr. O'Farrell. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on Mr. Wesson's motion to include students. Mr. Wesson, would you like to clarify your motion? It was seconded by Mr. Buscano.
Oh, it's no clarification. If you look at the last moving clause, it talks about providing rental assistance for tenants, and I am just adding, and students, in particular college students, that are now losing their dorm rooms or apartments and what have you, so that's all. And this deals specifically with the... Well, I think you could keep it simple and broad by just saying "and students."
All right, let's prepare to vote on that amendment. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, the last motion on this item, amending motion I should say, was introduced by Mr. Lee. Did you want to speak on, do you want to reiterate your amending motion on this item?
Yeah, just that we moved the second, I further move to a more manageable six months instead of the 24 months to fill the payment obligations.
Okay, very well, and that was seconded by Mr. Kocorian. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
Okay, now we're going to vote on the, we're going to vote on the item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
For clarification, Madam President, that would be now 72 N, as amended by the three motions that passed, which were Kocorian, O'Farrell, Wesson, Buscano, and Lee Kocorian.
Correct. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's move on.